Seven o'clock, we are rolling you on the floor as your orders.
Okay. Call the order at seven o'clock and we'll call. Gail?
Gail Linden.
Blake Moore.
Brandon Weinbaum.
Chris Kombieski.
Adam Wallace.
David Schwartz.
And looking for an approval for the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. And approval of the minutes from February 24th, 2025. Looking for a motion for that. Are there any corrections?
I wasn't here, so I can't correct it. Do I abstain also? In the vote?
You don't know, you don't have to. You can.
I can vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. And matter five, the site plan, special use for Big B Coffee. Hank, I think we were...
Yep.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, they're moving a little bit slow on this. So what we're done is, we're just going to take the site plan off the table until they're ready to present with that. They will require the site plans, the special lane use specifically for the patio, for the outside. Their focus at this point in time is getting the inside done and the outside drawings. They have had a little bit of a setback on that. So what I would ask the planning commission to do is, we're going to just dismiss the lane use. I don't need a motion for that until they're ready to come back with it. And ask you one more time to table the site plan until the next regular meeting.
Make a motion to table the review of the site plan for Big B Coffee at 2602 Coolidge until the next regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. And Hank, want to take us through the priority list for twenty-five?
Being that this is one of the few meetings where we actually don't have site plan reviews, we get to actually do some planning. So what I did was, you know, we set up all the different things that we were looking at for the priority list. It's a lot. But this list also includes some of the things that are done or in progress. So what I did want to do is, I wanted to go over it and give you the opportunity to comment on it. And then what I'd like to see if you could do is to take it home and rate it, each item, high, medium, or low priority. At that point in time, if you could get that back to either myself or Francesco, then we could give you a finalized priority list for the next meeting and we can actually start working on it. We have had a lot of stuff that's gone on that's been behind the scenes as far as what was on the last priority list, so I do want to fill you in on that. So without further ado, let's just run down the list here and so we can talk about it. I just want to make sure that if you have any questions about it, that you have an opportunity to ask before you make your decisions. So the first one is future land use and zoning. A lot of that comes into play when we do the master plan, which is not this year. Preserve residential land use and zoning within the core of Huntington Woods. That's something that we're always going to be doing because that's critical to the city of Huntington Woods. In a lot of respects, keeping Huntington Woods the way it is, as far as our zoning, is good. We also have the Woodward area zoned transitional district, which allows for retail, which allows for condos, which allows for office on Woodward, and actually all in the same mixed-use building even. So to take away something like that would be counterproductive, considering all the fast buses and, you know, we're all working on safer routes to school, we're always working on Woodward. Woodward's been a work in progress for many years, starting with the Woodward Avenue Action Association and always coming back. You know, there's a few, the Woodward Five, and then there's other organizations that are working on different plans for that now. So as we get that, that'll be forwarded to you. It's nothing that I can give you a finite thing and a plan and then say, hey, let's just do this because MDOT's involved and it's actually MDOT property, which is where the parking is in there. So without that partnership, we really don't have a whole lot of things that we can do because we need to know what's going on. So that's that. Complete needs assessment for the city campus area facilities along 11 Mile to determine functionality and upgrades as needed. Again, that was short range. We are doing some work in here with Veragee, which is the group that's doing a lot of the save cost savings and upgrades for us in the city. They're going to be doing street lighting. They're also going to be doing HVAC and different things at the building. We're also going to be getting solar on some of the buildings in Huntington Woods, city buildings, which is great. Some will get upgrades in various ways, shape, or form, but we're kind of excited about the partnership with that. So having said that, that's been completed. This here, as far as redevelopment for this area, that'll depend on what... The city commission's waiting for some RRC determination to see what we have with that. We're also working, what options are available to us. We're also working with Oakland County with the Main Street as a potential associate membership. That will help with that. And then for sustainability, require commercial and mixed-use developments to bear their fair share of system costs, such as providing onsite storage for storm water, evaluate impacts for development on municipal systems, and review fees for adequacy. Right now, the buildings are existing, so we can't really step into that until something happens as far as redevelopment for that. We can't just go say, hey, do this. So having said that, that'll also kind of piggyback on anything that comes back out of RRC or whatever else it is that we're doing. So that would be helpful in that regard. We can also require residential properties to wreck all downspouts to vegetated areas and other improved areas, but not to impervious surfaces and not to adjacent properties. We already require them not to drag water onto neighboring properties. We already do that. So there is some tweaking that we can do with that. It's a short range. Last time it was rated medium, but we just didn't get to that ordinance. Depending on what you guys say when you bring us back your sheets, that may be something that we can attack fairly quickly and reasonably during this. Complete streets, safer routes to school. Enhance and upgrade the streets gaping along the commercial corridors of the city, including Coolidge, 11 Mile, and Woodward. And then I'm going to go to the next one as well because they tie in. Implement new mid-block pedestrian crossings along 11 Mile near Scotia and Meadowcrest to help provide safer connections to Berkeley and to schools. And again, I had something there that said I would add review for Coolidge for the same reasons. And then complete a safe routes to school study for pedestrian crossings along 11 Mile to identify and confirm appropriate crossing locations and determine if the light timing should be increased at existing intersections for pedestrians. And again, I was hoping to add Coolidge for that. So let's talk about this for a couple minutes here. Basically, we're already there. We do have our crossing. We finally got that. We got it approved. We have financed. The city commission has been good enough to recognize the importance of this and the Safe Roots to School program, and they were in support of this. As a result, we're financed. Parts and components have been ordered already. The problem is, is that we would have had it done for this summer, but the... Some of the components are taking a little bit longer to get as materials are becoming somewhat in short supply for things. So as a result, that'll be done in the fall of this year, but it will be done. And it's a great thing, and I know that it's been on my radar ever since my kids were trying to play Frogger across 11 Mile to get to Berkeley High School. So believe it or not, it was actually safer to buy them cars to drive than it was to let them walk. So having said that, we're excited about that. We had potential discussions with Berkeley about another crossing down by Reynolds Park, which is by the Monarch, so that we would have more than one place for people to cross. Right now, if our kids are trying to cross to that, they're either doing the Frogger thing, or they're crossing at 11 Mile and Woodward, which is not a good idea, or they're crossing at Coolidge. In most cases, they're just running across 11 Mile, and that's just not something that's sustainable. It's only a matter of time before we have a problem. So we're very happy with the way that it is. It's going to be designed in a manner that's going to close off this parking lot over here so there won't be traffic, be it bikes or cars through there anymore. That'll help with some of the traffic and congestion in that area, and the light will be there. It'll also have public safety override, so when they need to get the police vehicles or the fire truck in or out, boom, it'll be done with a remote that's into each vehicle, and they can take care of that. So that's very helpful and should be really good. Very excited with that.
Hank, is that light going to be a timed light and working all the time, or is it going to be an activation light for the kids to cross?
It'll be a limited time light, and then it has capability to be a full-time light. Once we have it there, we'll be able to go ahead and see what adjustments need to be made, like perhaps like right around eight o'clock in the morning and perhaps like right around five at night. But there'll be a push button and there'll be a walkway for the kids to go through, so they hit the button and then the light turns and boom, there they go. They can walk into a safe crosswalk.
For that crosswalk, I've seen some of the ones now with those press and they flash. Is it going to be one of those or is it just going to be like what we have like in...
My understanding is it's going to be a press and it's going to turn red for the traffic and the kids will be able to cross unimpeded. But we'll see what it is. It's called a Hawk Beacon. That's the one that we're getting.
Hawk Beak?
Beacon.
Beacon. Okay, thank you.
So that was one of them. This has been looked at by TIA, which is Traffic Improvement Authority. This has also been looked at by our Public Safety Department, including Director Pazehowski. It's been looked at by City Manager Wilson, myself, Rocco Fortura, who's our planning, our DPW director, has looked at it as well. And we've also had Noack and Fraus weigh in on it. So everybody that pretty much could look at it has looked at it, and we are all excited about the possibilities of bringing some more safety to Huntington Woods and also complying with the safer streets, safer routes to schools, and the complete street program. So those are really good things.
But Hank, the crosswalk you're talking about, weren't they talking about that at Meadowcrest?
Yes.
And the other potentially at Coolidge as well?
And Coolidge.
Yeah, with the Lincoln.
And the reasons for that are is that it's great that we have Lincoln and it's great that that's almost a direct route to the school, but there is nothing between Lincoln and 11 or Lincoln and the freeway. And the problem is that turn off the freeway and the service drive, well, not for the next two years, but the freeway and the service drive is rather... It can be rather concerning.
So where on Coolidge would it be?
We're looking at the potential by Peaslee Park, which is between... I'm sorry, which is between Belfour and Winchester, which will also help because we have a lot of residents that walk through the shools over in Oak Park, and that would be helpful for them to be able to get there safer. And also the kids that come from Oak Park that actually use Peaslee Park, and then our kids that go over and use Oak Park facilities. So it would be helpful for that. Also, one of the other locations that was possibly discussed was on Talbot. So those are a couple of things, and that kind of splits the miles, and we'll see what it is. So to that extent, we have been working with Oak Park a bit, you know, and we're asking for grant money and study money to see if we can get something set up for that. Again, the more time that we have that, the more partners you have, kind of the longer it takes with that. And we're very ecstatic to work with Oak Park. They've been great. So, and again, the same cast of characters have been involved in that one as well. So it's just, this one came up first. This was our first priority because we had kids on a regular basis, and we already had a crosswalk at Lincoln. So we did have a method of getting from point A to point B that we do not have here. So as a result, that's what went first.
So 11 Mile definitely happening.
11 Mile, by the... By fall, it's anticipated.
Coolidge still a work in progress.
Coolidge is still a work in progress, but there is a... But there's progress. So, but 11 Mile's definitely happening, and we're very excited about that.
Do you know, Hank, if they... With the closure of 696 eastbound for two years, do you know if they changed the timings on 11 Mile Road at Woodward and Coolidge to get more traffic crossing? It seemed that...
I'm unaware if they did that. It doesn't... It seems like things are a little bit awkward right now, and the reason that that is is because you're doubling the traffic and you're still running with the same timing lights. And the hope with that would be, at least I would think, is that if people don't like it or they feel it's too slow, they'll find alternate routes. And obviously, they won't be coming through the city on that because we've got cars, we've got all kinds of stuff. I will tell you that it certainly appears to me, and I believe that it's been confirmed by Director Pazehowski, that we are writing more tickets on 11 Mile than we normally would be. So having said that, the next item is to coordinate with the city of Berkeley to continue this study of possibly implementing a four-to-three lane reconfiguration on 11 Mile to allow for safer pedestrian crossings and implement possibly green infrastructure. And the study should include a pilot project to test out design ideas and evaluate traffic flow. We have the traffic flow staffs. So we know how many cars are approximately going down here, varying a little bit day by day. Whether or not they're going to revise that based on this, I don't know. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Director Pazehowski about that. But part of the thing was, is that exploring the possibility of one lane each way with a center-left turn lane, which is part of the problem on 11 Mile because everybody stops and hangs a left, and then you've got cars merging and going back around, which you eliminate with that. Typically, that's a better mousetrap, but we're not there yet. And then having it striped like along the sides, if anybody taken Lincoln from... Or Woodward Heights is another good example of that. And you can kind of see how that works out where they stripe it in. But this would be a striped-in program, or we would ask that it be a striped-in program before that. But again, depending on how you choose this, it could be items that we focus on, and then we can kind of, I don't want to say push the issue, but we can kind of make the issue a little bit more front and center, you know, for us. It worked, you know, again, nothing moves real fast, but it worked, and, you know, we've got a light, which was a big thing, a big accomplishment for that. Again, complete streets, develop a city signage plan to use the park signs, city signs, and gateways. That's kind of half-done. We have new street signs. They're going to be going up shortly. These will comply with state mandates, which the other ones actually do not. So, and then there'll be a few special signs that have... That denote where the Hill Historic District is, and those will have a little bit different poppers because of that. So it's kind of exciting, kind of nice, and it's good for the historic district to get kind of a due there. And as far as a signage plan for the parks and gateways, that would be something that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board would do. That would not be the planning commission. Our thing was, the street signs weren't to be legal, so that was on a list, medium, and we were able to just kind of jump on that because we had some money for that. So when you have the money, you got to go. It's kind of that type of thing. And then complete streets, again, enhance existing pedestrian crossings throughout the city, along with 696, 11 Mile, and Woodward. Again, that was a medium. We're working again with... A lot of it's going to depend on how our mid-range crossings go on here, whether or not we pick up another one like this. All of our crossings and all of the way that those are built and designed have to do two things, or actually three things. They've got to meet the MDOT approval, they've got to meet the Oakland County Road Commission for here, they've also got to meet ADA requirements because that's crucial for that. They all have to be ADA compliant. That's why if you ever see those pads that are in Huntington Woods and the way the slopes are down for that, those all have to be a certain grade, they all have to have the pads. As we continue our sidewalk program, or as we continue our replacements, or if something happens where they have to be replaced based on road conditions, something like that, what'll happen is, is that they will be made ADA compliant. Complete streets, again, is to continue and research anti-monotony standards from other communities to evaluate how residential guidelines may be amended. We're always looking at that. When something comes in and we see a better mousetrap, at that point in time, we'll be bringing it to you. Times are such that we're still getting a lot of extensive remodeling and new houses in Huntington Woods for which we're grateful for, but it takes a lot of time for the planning commission to evaluate those. So as a result, we don't get to spend as much time on planning, which is why I was grateful to have the opportunity to talk to you all tonight about this. So we do do things as we see stuff come in. Also, other communities do call about, you know, how are things that you guys are doing working? You know, how is that going? And, you know, we get conversations like, well, I notice your property values keep escalating and ours are not escalating at the same rate that yours are. Okay, well, you know, sometimes it's good to be the example, and again, plagiarism's the most sincere form of flattery when it comes to ordinances. So we're always happy to answer questions and ask questions of our neighboring communities in order to get the best possible results for the city. And then consider rezoning the southwest corner of the property at 11 Mile and Woodward to transitional to align with the rest of Woodward Avenue corridor zoning. That was a medium, and we didn't do anything with it. And the reason that we didn't do anything with it is because Thrifty Flowers just underwent a very nice transition and renovation, and now that they're done with what they need to do, this may work out better for them. So at this point in time, what we'll be doing is, depending on where on the list you put that, that's something that may be attainable yet this year, assuming that, you know, that that's something that you would like to do. Again, in part of the zoning, update the zoning ordinance to sustainable design and environmental standards to provide stricter and more detailed regulations on managing stormwater runoff. Standards can include requiring more rigorous stormwater management practices for parking areas that exceed 20% of the required number of parking spaces. 20% is not arbitrary, it's been done in other places, so that's where that number comes from, and that's why we set it in there as a discussion point. Other requirements could include requiring residential properties that add over a certain threshold of square feet to show retention of first-flush storm events for the net increase of the impervious surface they add. That means the more you add, the more you've got to retain and the more you've got to show how you're doing it. That's not a bad idea, but that's kind of an extensive type of thing. So we would do that one, and when we went ahead and did that, we would involve the Environmental Sustainability Committee in order to see what they had to say and weigh in on that matter as well. Another one would be develop visual guidelines that illustrate how to achieve desired community character for residential and commercial areas of the city. That was low, and it was a long-range opportunity, and that's something that depending on time that staff has, which isn't a lot these days, but... Or desire of the planning commission, that could be placed in a different location. And then the last two are things that we've talked about in the past. One is revise regulations for corner lots to allow for interpretations for orientations. We talked about that in the joint meeting with the planning commission and the ZVA. From a staff standpoint, we would kind of hope that you would put that high so that we can take a look at that. That would be great if we could accomplish that this year. We have people that are going to the ZVA, and we have people that are, you know, that will be coming to the planning commission that have problems. This way, maybe we can come up with a solution, get it to the city commission, see if they can adopt it, and maybe make life a little easier for some of our residents with corner lots. The last one would be revise regulation for site plan review for houses that have a predominant material that design in previous editions make it practical or is overly burdensome. So what's that mean? That means you have a house. The house is brick. It has an addition on the back of it. The addition is siding. That addition was approved or predates the ordinance, but they want to put another addition on it or over it. They come here because it's not brick because the multitude of that is brick. So perhaps revising the language there to indicate that if it's attached to a sided structure, be it an addition or a portion of the house that's sided, that it can be siding. And perhaps even look at the site plan reviews to see, not only does it not have to go to the ZVA for something like that, but it doesn't have to come here for something like that. There are criteria that we have in the site plan review and the zoning ordinance that says, these are reasons that you don't have to go if you comply with all of these. So it may be as simple as adding a line or two here or there, or a well-thought-out paragraph in that category that we could perhaps go through and take a look at and see if there's not some way to make that a little bit easier for our residents, a little less burdensome. It's still satisfy what it was we were trying to accomplish here. An example being is that, you know, if you've got sided first floor, you can't realistically expect them to put brick on the second floor because that would be a pretty good feat of engineering because the brick has to sit on a foundation or a lintel. And that would, for a second floor all brick, that would require some astronomical feats of engineering for that to have. And that's currently what we're asking our residents to do. And it's like we've said, and we always feel that the ordinance is a living, breathing organism, and sometimes you find something that you ought to change in there or at least talk about, and we feel as staff that's one of them. So what we'd like to do at this point with that is to say, we have the priority list or we have what's on there, and it's quite an extensive list of things that we have had and that we haven't had. If there's something on there that you feel is just something or not, you can certainly recommend for us to just take it off of there. But the goal would be is to have you take these with you, have you go and then get them back to staff, either drop them off to Franco or myself, or to email us with what you feel is, you know, is what they should be with that, like high, low, and medium. You can kind of take a look at the last priority to see what it was. Again, sometimes things fall your way, and, you know, we get a grant for something, so something changes, you know? But other than that, we'd love to have your input. We'd love to finalize a new priority list for the 2025 year at the next meeting if possible. So at this point in time, what we'd like to do is take any questions that you have concerning this, and then perhaps, you know, we can talk about that or if there's anything on here that you don't understand, or anything else?
I had a question. On the second one with the... On the first page you were talking, did we... You said we completed the assessment for that?
The city did. The city commission directed a study for this area.
Okay.
And what could be... So there's been some work done on this. If that's something that we've done... See, here's the thing. Planning for city property has always kind of been the province of the city commission. It doesn't mean that the planning commission doesn't get an opportunity to weigh in on it. It's if they were going to hold a public hearing. A public hearing could be held at the commission level, or it could be held at the planning commission level. At the planning commission level, typically we get some good participation, and then by the time it goes to the city commission, you already know what people's thoughts are, and you already know that because it's been done here. Whether or not they'll do that will depend on what opportunities are available to us. And that's to be determined by either, you know, a request for proposals, an RFP, something like that. But there's a lot of moving parts to making something like this work, like, okay, so where does City Hall go? Would City Hall be in there? What do we do with the city staff and how do we conduct business in the interim time? So there's a lot of moving parts to that. And then how far do you go? Well, do you go all the way from here? Do you put City Hall, Public Safety together? And then do you do something with Public Works? And the answer is yes to all of those because what would make this... One of the things that would make this attractive to a developer is actually the brownfields credits that would come via the Department of Public Works. So that's a big thing that would help motivate somebody to undertake this project. Part of the pit... Part of the pitfalls of a project like this, one, in order to get density, density is what makes this work for a developer. If you were to put City Hall and Public Safety and all that on the first floor and you were at a coffee shop, for example, you could, you could do that, but then above it, you would need to have either offices or condos, apartments, that type of thing. And in order to get the bang for the buck for a developer to come in and do something like that, we would need to have higher than the two stories that we're here now because that's what you're allowed on residentially zoned property, which this actually is. Now, the zoning could be changed on this property. You could do overlays, you could do P and D's, you could do, there's a number of things that you could do for this, but at this point in time, we've not been directed by the city commission to do any of that. So that, hopefully, that didn't confuse you and it answered some of your questions.
I have a quick question about the Rite Aid or the defunct Rite Aid. I don't, maybe this has been addressed, but we're talking about Big B. Is there any game, is there any plan for that at this point?
We don't own it. So what there is for that is the, the owner has the opportunity to bring in businesses that comply with the current zoning for that, which retail would be great. They could even split that up perhaps more and rent it out as smaller stores and locations. There's nothing that has been submitted to the city, although I've heard so many different things about what they were talking about putting in there. But, you know, it's all good until they find out the price of rent there.
Right. And so it's owned by Rite Aid or?
No.
Oh.
Rite Aid never owned it.
Interesting.
So it's owned by another company. And it was leased to Rite Aid. The reason Rite Aid was all over is it was a triple net lease. So the persons that released it, which was Rite Aid Corporation out of Pennsylvania, they were responsible for the taxes, the maintenance and any, you know, any repairs that needed to be done to it and, you know, building advertising, you know, zoning requirements, signage, that type of thing. Towards the end of their tenancy there, we started to run into some problems with some main issues there. We did write them a substantive amount of tickets and then ultimately they went out. But that wasn't just for that location, that was a systematic thing with Rite Aid. And, you know, we're sorry to see them go because for no other reason than we'd like to have the building filled. Right now, we don't have a ton of tenants. We don't, we don't have anything we can bring to the table as far as, you know, what that is. So the Big B would be there. The good thing about Big B is, is that they're decent to deal with and they're viable and people use their locations. And it would seem that Big B would pretty much complement anything that went in there.
Sure.
It's hard to think of something where they would not. So other than that, there's no other information that I can impart at this point.
If the landlord for the Rite Aid site thinks about splitting it up into smaller stores or whatever else with Big B going in first and what we've approved and then they want a special plan for the patio, isn't that going to create a parking problem for more tenancy in that spot?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Because here's the thing, we don't know what's going in there. If it's an insurance agency, is it one part of it or the whole thing? There's a lot less density, a lot less uses for that than there are for, for example, a dentist office where they have operatories and they have to have one person plus one for the patient for each chair that they have. So, and then the other part of that too is they've got like, I think it was 45 spaces, give or take one or two there. So when the Rite Aid is looking at a opportunity for, oh, I'm sorry, when Big B's looking for an opportunity as an outside space, my suggestion to them would be get in here first and let the others, let the spaces that are left kind of determine what size and configuration the other businesses can be when they get there. Also, it applies to signage because they only get a certain amount of signage. They don't get the same amount of signage every single time a business goes in there. They get a fraction of what's allowed. So that's one of the reasons not to split it. But, you know, finding a tenant to take the rest of that space may be something that, you know, I know they're working on a couple of things, but right now, they have nothing, they have nothing finding.
In addition to this list that we're provided as we did it the last time and we did it, if we have other suggestions to put on the list, we should let you know.
Please, please. If there's stuff that we haven't thought of, we're working on a list that was based on the fact that we had some input from our ZVA with this, based on the fact that we've had past planning commissions weigh in on this. Always interested in see if there's other things or maybe there's something that we could do that might be a quick fix for something. Let's take a look at it. Any ideas you have or ideas that we would certainly want to at least consider?
We're looking at 11 Mile and the reconfiguration. I mean, how realistic is that in the next two years at 696? Is that something we?
Fairly.
Okay.
And part of the reason that I say fairly is, is because, again, the 696 traffic is something that's a temporary situation. I can tell you that traffic calming is something that's not new. It's something that's been done before and realistically, for those of you that live close to 11 Mile or, you know, travel 11 Mile, we've seen an uptick in the amount of semis, we've seen an uptick in the amount of that. If something like this were to take place, there's a likelihood they would find a different And again, don't forget, they're not going to be like this for two years. Directions change, sections change. So there will be some, there will be some time when there's some relief. To the extent that it'll be great, I wouldn't think so. But we'll take any help we can get for the next couple of years because we've already seen that there's definitely a distinct difference in traffic on 11 Mile as well as Woodward and as well as Coolidge.
And when, when do you want this list? Do you have a date in mind that you want this back from us?
I'd like to see it back within a week because once you give it back to us, we have to create it. And then once we get this finalized for what we have, I think that we are, we'll be in a situation to go on it. But I want to make sure that I have this for the next meeting. And at this point in time, we already have a site plan in, so the sooner the better. I would say that it could be reasonable for you to take a look at this and maybe give us an email. I would feel like a week is enough time to take a look at it. And the sooner you can get it back to us, I mean, we'll never get 100% response, but to the extent you can and give us any insight as to what your thoughts are on this, we'd greatly appreciate it. But the sooner the better for this because right now, we're in March, I'd like to have this finalized by April. It would be counterproductive to be doing this in September. By September, I'd like to have some results retasked.
So I'm just going to ask this, because I kind of went through this already and I'm pretty familiar with it, and maybe I'm taking too much cough medicine, but I am having a hard time coming up with other items that I would add to this list at this time. So I'm wondering, is it worth like having a quick conversation here and just see, are there things that other people see as priorities that I'm just not seeing at this point?
I think the thing with this is too, is that by doing it this way, it would also allow people that are not currently present to weigh in on that.
Got it, got it, got it.
So it's, it's one of those things where, you know, we could do that. And by doing it this way, there's no violation of the Open Meetings Act because you're going to be sending it to us, you're not going to be sending it as a group, you're going to be sending it to us and there will be no discussion on it. It'll come each year to staff, staff will then take and evaluate it and put it on there. At the point in time where we do that, next time, we would anticipate that you would approve that. But the same list and the same everything and the same instructions would go out to those of the planning commission that couldn't make it tonight. And as a result, we have roughly, you know, a third of the planning commission that could weigh in on things that we otherwise would not be able to have do so.
Anything else? We'll open up for public participation and we'll close public participation. In motion to adjourn? They're moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.